Sorry about that.[12.63][12.63](laughter) I call this meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer, the role, please.
Mr. Posh, here. Mr. Register, here. Mr. Silverman, here. Ms. Wright, Mr. Zucker.
Here. Sorry to startle you with a hammer. Ms. Wright had an unavoidable conflict with work just at last minute, she'll be in a little bit late, so I just want to let you know. As usual, I want to apologize. Welcome, everyone. Apologize for my back. It's just the way that work sessions work, so we can all face the presentation and also thank you for being here tonight. And with that, I...
Could we?
Yeah, I'm turning it over to the superintendent.
Okay, all righty. Good evening, everyone. We'd first like to start with our ELA book adoption, our first reading. So we're going to have Karen, who's going to do the first reading? Karen Heinsberg? If you could come up, please. And it was, the information was in your board packet Friday. And we would do three readings, and so tonight will be the first one. Okay.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. Good evening.
Great.
My name is Karen Heinsberg, and I'm representing our Educational Services Department right now, speaking to the ELA pilots that we would like to propose for adoption. So at this point, we have gone through a year of piloting the programs. Super Kids at K and 1, Ready Gen at grades 3 to 5, Literature from Pearson at grades 6 to 8, and Collections at grades 6 to 12. Those are the programs that we would like to propose for adoption for our next school year and for projecting out five to seven years. So K-2 would hold Super Kids, grades 3 to 5 would have Ready Gen, 6 to 8 would have Literature, and 9 to 12 would have Collections. So those recommendations came out of a meeting on February 3rd from the Reading Subcommittee and those teachers who piloted. And in your packet, you see the recommendations in their own words for why they would like to have you select these programs at their respective grade levels. Data was considered. Their perception was considered. Teacher survey data was collected from all teachers who piloted. And family and parent feedback was also garnered in January when the materials were on display for public review, both at Delisle and at Lee Road Library.
Question? You look like anyone?
A couple of questions. On the proposed cost on page 5 of what we were given, is that a yearly cost or is that the total cost?
Total cost for the years of the adoption, which are the consumables included for Super Kids for a total of five years, and the other programs for a total of seven years.
So we're talking a total cost over the five to seven years of $800,000?
Correct.
Okay.
For K to 12 adoption. That does not include professional development costs, that's material costs.
So what's professional development cost, does?
Those are vary by the levels, so they're approximately $2,500 per session. It would determine, the total cost would be determined on how many sessions we would contract with them.
We could find out approximately what we anticipate that to be, that'd be useful to know.
I'm sorry?
What approximately what, I mean, obviously the sessions, we don't know.
What we would want.
Well, just a, I don't say, an educated guess as far, or a guesstimate of what that would be.
Sure.
And then what exactly, what is this, I guess, okay, we're spending $800,000, what's that by? What do we, what do we get?
So, for an example, your Ready Gen program, 3 to 5, each of the kids would have approximately 12 novels to read in the school year, as well as their regular materials, their reading journal, their, like workbook-style materials, and all of the teacher access. All programs have a portal access as well for an online access that includes some support materials there for both teachers and students.
Does it include the cost of, if there's 12 books a reading of this semester, is that, is that cost included, or is that?
Everything is included.
Okay.
With the exception of, at your Collections, your 912, there's a, there's a, there's a two entry, I believe it's recorded in your PowerPoint slide, where there's $35,000 that sets aside for the purchase of the novels, separate from the purchase of the adoption. So the adoption runs for the student texts and the online access, where the Everbind, we just kind of like called it Everbind, that $30,000 sits separately so that the teachers can choose those novels by grade level, outside of the program.
So this is ostensibly, this is our English curriculum, K through 12?
Correct.
Okay. Is it possible to get also, if you've got, if there's, you know, I don't say sample, what the reading, I'd be curious to see what the reading lists are?
Oh, okay.
Because, yeah.
Sure.
What is, what are they saying, hey, here's what you're going to be, I mean, I'm not going to play a Texas school board thing here, but I'm very curious to see, okay.
Sure. Sure.
It's a good choice.
Okay, good.
I have some questions. Okay, so as far as the cost goes, is that like a one-time cost that we pay, like, this coming year? So is it all the $800,000, you know, right away, or is it over a period of seven years? Or how does that, how does that work?
Mr. Gainer? Typically, typically, my understanding is that it's paid one time and it's paid upfront.
And is there precedent for us to do this in the past? And do we have budget to do this?
Yeah, traditionally, we do that, I don't know with this specific adoption, but that has been done in the past.
Okay.
Pleasant.
And is it based on the number of students that are involved?
And the number of teachers, yes.
Okay, so it's, you know, with which enrollment numbers are we using? Are we using the most current ones that we've received, or is it?
The current numbers.
Not the declining ones, but the current ones?
The current ones, mhm.
Okay. And if the board has additional questions, you know, they're going to come back again the next meeting for a second reading and a third reading, so you have time. And then Karen and Felicia will make sure that we get this information and be putting it in your board packet for Friday.
I guess I have one other question. I mean, what happens if this doesn't get approved? I mean, do you continue just using what you use right now? And do we have to re-license that?
And the last adoption was 2006, 2007.
Oh, so that was a while back, then?
Yes.
Ten years ago.
Okay, so that information is obviously very dated. Got it, okay.
Okay.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, the second piece is Educational Services has a presentation on two things. One, a few board meetings ago, we talked about investigating the 5, 6, 7, 8 configuration. So they're going to briefly update you, responding to that request, and spend more time on the 6, 8 program design. So we're going to really spend the majority of the time of what our 6, 8 program design will look like moving forward, but they're also going to answer those questions regarding the 5, 6, 7, 8 configuration. So Felicia, Ms. Gould, will facilitate that with her team.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come before you and speak on the educational programming in regards to the master's facilities. Our research has covered the gamut. We have had interviews, we've had school visits, as well as we've used the expertise of the Educational Services Department, as well as the building level administrators and teaching staff in order to gather this information here for you tonight. I'd like to thank my Ed Services team for all of the work that they've done thus far in this process, and please feel free at any time to ask us questions throughout the As we begin with our strategic plan, the educational programming falls under two specific strategic plan goals. That's strategic plan goal number one, looking at objective two, all students meet or exceed state expectations in core content areas of reading, math, science, and social studies, along with that being strategy A, every teacher will use research-based strategies and materials to ensure that all students can access grade-level material and are using critical thinking and problem-solving skills. Strategy, strategic goal three, I mean, I'm sorry, two, educational approach, equity, empowerment, and opportunities. Objective number five, challenge and support each student by providing equitable access to rigorous and relevant curriculum aligned to common core state standards and 21st century skills. And that falls under strategy B, ensure that all schools implement curriculum and instructional strategies aligned to the common core state standards and 21st century skills. Again, our research, we've had visits and conference calls to Bedford, Fairview, Plain Local, Shaker, South Euclid, Solon, Wadsworth, and then, again, the expertise of the Educational Service team, and the seven elementary schools, and the two middle schools.
I'm going to ask a question here, if I could. In the school districts, your, your shortlist, I guess, here, why Fairview Park? I have no idea where Plain Local is. I sort of know where Wadsworth is, and I do know where Westlake is. Why include those in your conversations versus South Euclid-Linhurst? I don't think it's on here. Or South Euclid, or, or, other, I'm trying to think, other Heights-Hillcrest districts, or other Lakewood, Parma, or even other MSAN districts?
Because we were looking for school districts that had the 5, 6, 7, 8 model.
Okay, okay, got you.
Our targets included in our research, we looked at population, the educational programming, special education, our fine arts, which would cover our music, art, world languages, PE, technology, scheduling, the Ohio Improvement Process, teacher certification, leadership, partnerships, transportation, state assessments. And we researched these for all configurations, for K through 4, 5 through 6, 7 through 8, and our current configuration of 6 through 8. Taking a look at our population at our two middle schools currently as of today. Monticello Middle School, you see you have our grade levels of 6, 7, and 8. This is where our population is, based on Infinite Campus data. Roxborough Middle School, this is where our population is, giving us a total population of 1,209 students. A lot of the information that you have in the packets that you receive included Infinite Campus data, as well as the Future Think data. Moving into our educational programming, looking at the curriculum initiatives, our programming would really remain the same for our current configurations. It would look a little differently in our 5, 6, 7, 8 models, being that it would be broken up by 5, 6, 7, 8, taking away that middle school configuration, but the programming itself would still remain the same. This year, we've had the, would have the inclusion of our Project Lead the Way program, which is a middle school program that provides rigorous and relevant experience through activity and project-based learning, and it's known as Project Lead the Way around our Gateway program. Our performance-based grouping, although it remains in place, meaning that all advanced courses are still in place, we would be looking at basically our math portion of the performance-based grouping, and that is that the advanced level courses are still in place, but making sure that we look at maybe some assessment levels to incorporate into the math configuration so that students are truly being ready for the rigorous courses that they're getting, that what they would receive high school credit for. With our Avid framework, that would remain the same. Our IB focus would remain the same for middle years program of STEM and Humanities, and we would continue to do transitional programs for students who are entering at 6th grade, as well as for students who are exiting at the 8th grade. Our music and art in our middle schools are offered on every other day, or either year-long, depending on the grade level. Gifted services still remain in the middle school. We use the pull-out model. Avid courses are still there for 7th and 8th grade students. Our world languages are offered and will continue. PE and health are offered every other day, based on the schedule. Our technology in the middle schools is one that we continue to investigate, and we have a five-year technology program in place, but currently in our middle schools, we have a one-to-one technology device. Smartboards are there, document cameras, iPads, MacBooks. I think I covered everything on there. Our special ed curriculum, I'm sorry, special ed services would be still in place. If a student is in need of an autism unit, those units are still there. If it's ED unit, those students, those are still in place, and we would still be looking at a co-teaching model. Co-teaching meaning that you would have a general education teacher and an intervention specialist providing the instructional support for students in a regular ed classroom. Any questions around these specific pieces?
A question on, you mentioned gym, art, music.
Yeah.
So students don't, if I'm, if I'm taking, if a current student is taking, I don't know, gym, gym's an easy one. So they don't have gym five days a week? It's three days a week? It's, I'm trying to understand, this is news to me, I guess, I mean, for year, I mean, it's, you know.
We have our middle school principal back there.
The same with, the same with art and music. I would have assumed that would be a classroom every day, but it's not every day, it's...
No. It's based on the schedule because of their block classes, and they have a different AB schedule, so it's offered every other day.
Okay, so it's not every other day for 40 or 45 minutes, it's every other day for, like, a much larger period of time? Is that...
Patrick?
All right, so currently, the kids have two-period math.
Do you want to come up? Oh, sorry. You can come up here.
You can sit in Ms. Wright's seat for a minute if you want.
Oh, okay.
We'll just call you Ms. Wright.
So currently, the students have a two-period math class, a two-period English class, Science and Social Studies. They have to have lunch, that only leaves two periods in a day. We're required by the IB program to offer PE and health, world language, either vocal, instrumental, or graphic art, and the only way you can do that is to run an every-other-day schedule. 8th graders take orchestra, band, and vocal music every day all year, because we're getting them ready for the high school program.
It's almost, it's almost akin to college, where you have a class Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Okay, got you.
And our students will still receive high school credit in algebra and geometry, and our world languages.
Stay just in case as well.
Just stay just in case.
Unless Beverly gets here, then.
If, we started to look at the scheduling pieces that follow, follow around our educational programming, and certification for our teachers is pretty much the same. For a 5, 6 building, you would be looking at someone who has certifications between K through 8, 1 through 8, and 4 through 9, and 7 through 12. Our leadership for 6 through 8 would remain the same. Looking at other configurations, currently in our elementary schools, we have only a principal and not an assistant principal. As far as teacher collaboration, every teacher has a planning period, but there's also time for grade-level teaming or departmentalization, depending on the school and their choice. As far as scheduling is concerned, our instructional hours would remain the same, because you, by the state time, you have to have 910 instructional hours, K through 5 and up to 6th grade, and 1,001 hours, 7 through 8. And currently, in our middle schools, we have 1,050, and in our elementaries, we have 1,036.
I do have two questions on this one.
Okay.
In regard to the upper and lower concept. Did you folks game out a scenario in regard to staffing models? And then the same thing in regard to transportation? Because I think we would see, the question I would see, do we, would we achieve any, I hate to say economies of scale, but you no longer having perhaps, you don't have to have two separate music programs, there's two separate art, you theoretically could have, either have more, more for the students, and then the same time, transportation. I'm very curious to see, I wouldn't anticipate the possibility for an increase in transportation costs. I'd be curious to see how much that, or did you run it out and know how much it would cost more to do?
Well, Scott is here, and he has worked those numbers out, so...
From a geographic standpoint, I know we have a, I hate the hot spot in regard to high concentration of students to the north of Monticello, and then we have a high concentration in the Superior Road corridor, which is already at the periphery of the two attendance zones. So I was curious to see, transportation, I could see a cost going up, but in the meantime, we may see some economies of scale on the curriculum, on the educational side. That's why I was curious to see.
Okay. In regards to your transportation costs, a lot of it would end up revolving around some of the bell times and what we could do model-wise. We were looking at a minimum of four buses, and the four buses, the initial cost would be right around 450, 400,000, say, 400,000. We projected it out to an actual amount of 16 buses, based just on the student load, if we can adjust the bell times. And that would be an initial cost of 1,568,000. The operating cost for the four buses every year, today's price is around 260,000. If we had to go all the way out to the 16 buses, we are at like 1,040,000. So transportation costs definitely have would probably increase with that, just based on, because of the concentration of students.
So basically, then, we're looking at, you've got your, your upfront costs, and you have a recurring cost, because we have to bus replacement as well.
Well, and that, that's not even counting the bus replacement with that additional, that's just driver, fuel, and everything like that.
It would, taking out the upfront costs, the capital upfront cost, you're still talking at least a quarter of a million to half a million dollars in operating costs a year.
Correct.
Okay. On the flip side, do we do a staffing model? Do we, do we see any savings as far as not having duplication of services from the staffing situation?
The staffing model basically would split the staff in half that we have. You would have your students and teachers going to the 5, 6, and then you would have your 7, 8. So the staffing model pretty much would remain the same. The cost would come in when you start looking at professional development that you would have to provide for the staff in having a 5, 6 model, which would then turn into an intermediate model, and a 7, 8, and some of the co-teaching practices. One thing that would go up would be the special ed continuum, because then you would have classes that would be 5, 6, and 7, 8, as opposed to having a straight 6, 8 class.
Right. And you'd have to provide the full continuum in both buildings.
Yeah.
So now you have a little bit of flexibility, because you can put a center-based program in one building and not necessarily another. But if you go 5, 6, 7, 8, you have to make sure all services are available in each building. So there would, there would be a staffing increase for a special ed.
So to, to, to simplify it to a lay level, it would be for our core, core classroom, core class curriculum, math, English, science, social studies, we're really not going to see any, I use economies of scale, but we wouldn't see any benefits from consolidation, where we would, if there would be any benefits, it'd also be offset by potential cost creep on, I don't want to say tertiary, but niche components. The arts, music, and special ed, things that are very specialized, there, we would, that's where you may see some savings, or you may see some cost creep as well.
Right. Yeah. Our Ohio Improvement Process is in all of our schools. They have their TBT process, if you've ever heard about the five-step process. It's a collaborative process in order for us to focus on the academic achievement for all students, and so all of our schools are currently doing that model at the elementary, the middle, and at the high school. Then we got into athletics. At the 6th grade, you don't have any competitive teams, but at 7th and 8th grade, you have competition teams. If you were looking at a 5, 6 building, you wouldn't have to worry about athletics, because you still wouldn't have it there, but when you combine your 7 and 8, you would have to look at possibly having an A or a B team, as opposed to now, we have two separate competitive teams, and if we don't have enough student participation, we currently combine the schools' students together and form one team.
Can you do that today?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, I think our lacrosse team is set up like that now.
Cross-country as well.
Mm-hmm. But based on all of the information and the research that was conducted, it doesn't matter what configuration or design model that happens within the school. The things that came out of the research show that you must have a clear and a shared focus. Curriculum and instruction and assessments have to be aligned with state standards, high standards and expectations for all students. The leadership has to be effective, frequent monitoring and learning of the teaching, meaning that you're evaluating your programming and your teaching and instructional models. Professional development has to be focused, have to have a supportive learning environment, and high levels of parent and community involvement.
The systems who are doing an upper, are an upper and lower concept. Why? I guess, why do they, why do they, why do they go that route? And what are the pluses and minuses that they see from them?
Quite a few.
Maybe just, maybe one of you guys can talk about each of your visits, because you visit different ones.
We all went different places.
I started off in Plain Local, which is in Stark County. They have a 5, 6, 7, 8 collaboration. They had some issues in regards to equitable educational programs and reputation of schools. And they also had some issues in regards to financial resources. They were building a brand-new high school, very similar to what we're doing here, and they looked at the resources they had, so they moved to a 5, 6, 7, 8 collaboration, I mean, a 5, 6, 7, 8 program. One of the things that they saw as a benefit to the program is that you had all of the students in the entire district going to the same building, so therefore cut down on some of the equity issues. One of the buildings was called Glen Hood, the other one was called Oakwood, and so therefore they had, you know, you can look at the demographics of the one they called Glen Hood as opposed to Oakwood. And so as a result of it, all kids went through 5, 6 program, and it became the Glenwood program, and the 7, 8 program, which is also the Plain Local program. And it changed some of the equity issues in regards to what was going on in those school systems. They also found out it worked well in regards to just changing some of the reputations of the schools, and that was one of the main reasons. Finances and the reputations of the two buildings, and trying to bring everything under one umbrella.
You know, I know it's not about money and test scores, but, I mean, when, I mean, when you interview these other school districts and talk to them about it, I mean, did you find that they saw bumps up in test scores when they did this kind of thing? Or were there just a whole nother, there was just a different rationale to walk down that path?
The school district I went to, yes. Glenwood saw significant changes, but I think a lot of that was due to the instructional leadership, not necessarily the configuration of the building. They brought in a very strong, dynamic young principal who had worked at Oakwood previously, and as a result of his expertise, he was able to come in and put some things in place on a consistent basis, so you had the same type of educational instructional practices, not so much programs, educational instructional practices at the 5, 6, that you also had at the 7, 8, because he was trained at the original building, which was Oakwood, and he came over to the other building. And so they've seen some things in consistency with their 5, 6, and 7, 8 in regards to instructional practices, and instructional leadership has a lot to do with that.
Thanks.
Good evening. I got an opportunity to go to the Bedford City Schools, and this was touched on a little bit, but I also think that we found this through our research and our debriefing, was this idea of transitions for students. And one of the things that seemed to come up, and we heard principals from different districts that are incorporating this model, saying, they, their transitions may be increased for students, but they bring students together, and they form that identity as a cohort at different times. So, for example, if a student, all the students are coming in, and they're really becoming a part of a 4th grade cohort, or a 6th grade cohort, it doesn't matter if they have another transition in 8th grade, or even another transition in 10th grade, because those same kids are part of that cohort. So really building that, that identity of the group happens earlier, and so it impacts those transitions a little bit less. So as, opposed to some other models where we might have students come together only as a whole in 9th grade, those transitions outside of their cohort group may have had a bigger impact, because they didn't necessarily have that full-blown school identity or cohort identity. And I think many of the districts or schools that we talked to, talked about bringing kids together, really solidifying their ideas. You can talk to kids in the 4th grade, and you're the graduating class of 2030. That's a little bit different than trying to say, well, this cohort is over here, you're not really going to get together with the rest of your classmates until you reach 6th grade, or maybe not till 9th grade. So I think that was something worth noting when we were talking about our... That's a little bit different than trying to say, well, this cohort is over here. You're not really going to get together with the rest of your classmates until you reach sixth grade or maybe not till ninth grade. So, I think that was something worth noting when we were talking about our debrief.
Get this one over here if you want.
Good evening. I visited Solon along with two other colleagues, and Solon has had this model for 20-plus years. They were reviewing it during their strategic plan of this upcoming year, and because everyone was so happy with it, they decided to keep it the way that it is. The transition piece is very important to them. The five-six principal makes sure that she goes to IEPs, 504s, any special meetings that they have at the elementary students because she actually lays her hand on every single schedule of every child. They do put a document out in the email asking parents, not necessarily their input, but saying what works best for your child, what are their strengths, what are their weaknesses, and do you need your child to not be around a certain student? And then they compile all this. She sits down with her team, and they actually group the students according to their strengths, weaknesses, and what they need, and the principal touches every child's schedule before they're put together in the group. And the same thing happens when the children transfer or transition to seven, eight. When asked what the benefits were, she said, teacher collaboration, the teachers are able to work together, they're able to do different type of assessments together, they know what the expectations are, it works well for the student, so they make sure that they do the scheduling in place. And the five-six building that I visited had over 1,000 students. And then Karen and Jen went to the seven, eight building.
Their buildings are right. I think are relatively close to one another, correct?
They're across the street from each other.
Gotcha.
What about Shaker? Did one of you guys go to Shaker?
I did. I had the opportunity to go to Shaker, and pretty much what everyone has shared was the same outcome for Shaker. They are currently looking at their configuration right now, and a lot of conversation around the five, six, seven, eight, but it's been like that over 20-plus years. So, a lot of the people whom we met with, they, they had gone to school there in that configuration. Now, they're teaching there in that configuration, and the principal at the five-six building, he's been in the district 24 years, and he said that's the only configuration that he knows, that he's never been in a six-through-eight building.
So, if there was no cost differential to move to five, six, seven, eight, it would cost us no additional cost, would there be a recommendation that you guys would give us?
I think...
I guess I would go back to the, the idea that regardless of what configuration you
do, you have to do it well.
Yeah.
And we could, we could do a five, six, seven, eight, and if it's not handled appropriately, it wouldn't necessarily be effective. You know, what was clear in the research was that the configuration itself is not the panacea, and there's a lot of benefits that can be drawn from it in our district. I think in terms of bringing, you know, a lot of the cultural things that were talked about, bringing kids together, putting everybody in the same building, doing that early in their educational experience, there's a lot of good things that could come from that, you know? But again, if it's, if it's not handled appropriately, if our staff aren't trained properly, if we aren't managing the transitions well, then that configuration by itself won't yield the results that we think we should see. And, you know, I think from the, from the special needs side, certainly replicating things, you know, in two different buildings, there is a cost associated with it, but it's certainly not prohibitive in terms of us being able to do it. But you would have to make sure you had buildings that were capable of doing that in terms of space and capacity and size, you know, because sometimes with special needs programming, there's some space considerations. You know, we have, we have classrooms that are complex and need, and need a great deal as our students need. So, there are some things that would factor into it, but I don't, I think, I think as I've looked at it and as the group has looked at it, there's a strong case for either thing. And I think ultimately, for us, it's a, it's a question of what is most fiscally prudent for us and what is educationally appropriate in balancing those two things. So, that would be my response to that question.
And to add to that, I think the screen says it. You know, when the district, the recommendation that we currently have is to go through, use a six, eight model, I think there was a process in place that the ed services team and others really vetted the process and stated that we believe that a six, eight model is what we would recommend with the master facilities plan. We're going to make sure that, you know, we have a clear and shared focus. We have that through our strategic plan. All of these places, curriculum instruction assessments, I mean, Allison and her team have gone back and revisiting the assessments that we currently have and seeing which ones we need to keep and which ones we need to do away with. Our high standards and expectations for all, we've made that clear in our, even in our mission statement and our vision statement and our strategic plan. Effective leadership, we're working with now, with Mr. Womack's position was changed because we wanted to have a one-point person to make sure that they were developing those principles, and we had our leaders, we're getting the leadership skills and tools that they need to be effective leaders in our district. The monitoring and learning and teaching, Felicia showed you that, that screen in our OIP process and our DOTs, and we're looking at the processes that we have in place to make sure that things are aligned, to make sure our outcomes of student achievement are achieved. Focus professional development, we are working on a professional development plan, making sure our professional development plan is aligned to what the outcomes we need, that we're giving our teachers the tools that they need, supportive learning environment, all of those things we're making sure that happens. Our high-level parents and community involvement, we put that in our strategic plan. So, I believe the recommendation is we're going to move forward with our six, eight model, the plan that we have, however the team really wanted, and if there was requests, if we had, let's, let's look at it. Community came to us and said, we really want you to look at the five, six, seven, eight, just to see what are some pros and cons. Is it a better model? I think it's a different model. But our implementation of, of whatever program design that we choose, we make sure that is strong, we make sure we do it with fidelity, and we're continuing to monitor and make any adjustments as necessary.
Questions from anyone?
Couple things real quickly. First, thanks for the, it was very clear and to the point, which is nice. It was a shorter PowerPoint than usual, which I'm saying thank you. Jeff, I really appreciate the comments you just made. I think, Jim, it's, it's a valid question, you know, what do you, you know, what if money was an object, but did we, all of us know it is an object? But I think your answer is the right answer, and you made the same statement, which is the other part that I guess I never get a complete handle on is how results are ascribed to a certain part of, of an equation. So, you change a model, and, and if you change a model and you do it right, then everyone is going to say it was the model that made the difference. But as Mr. Womack said, well, was it the leadership that was changed at the exact same time? Or is it the five, six, seven, eight model? Is it, is it the leadership? Is it the cohort cohesion that was introduced through the model? And I think it's really important that we realize that if the decision is that we're going six through eight, then we just have to do it right. And, and I'm going to say something terribly impolitic, but in the years I've been here, I think the middle schools have been, I think in most districts, the middle schools are the forgotten child, right? I mean, it's the, it's that middle years where all the kids' heads are going every which way. I mean, I know my own kids, they sort of lost their minds when they entered me at middle school and then regained them in high school some miraculous way. But, but I do think it's something we need to really put this kind of focus into and realize that there are things you learn from your, from what you saw, and, and we as a board completely support anything you can do to make the middle school years absolutely as beneficial as they possibly can, whether we did six through eight or if we changed the model.
Any more questions coming?
You don't?
Yep.
Well, that was really just tragically easy. So, we're going to move on to the next part of, we, I need a motion for an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3, to meet with board legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and/or the school district that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Dana.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.